I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council meeting Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, McKinney Council Chamber, Agenda Item Number One, Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible) United States of America, a truly republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Menom Secretary, roll call.
Counselor Lozo.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Shinier.
Present.
Counselor Daniels.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
And Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a call. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Considered Accept, the meeting minutes of March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? Counselor Rivas, and then Counselor Kelly.
Just a correction on the Counselors' Forum. The spelling of ella is E-L-L-A, and poderosa is P-O-D-E-R-O-S-A.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. On line item fifteen, where it says, under Subcommittee Reports, General Government, says Counselor Daniel, it should be Counselor Kelly. Planning and Development, says Counselor Dow, it should be Counselor Daniel. And Protection of Persons and Property, says Counselor Kelly, and that should be Counselor Also, on line item three sixty-three, which was a vote on an amendment, it cites the vote as six to one, should be six to two, Counselor Marquetti and Counselor Kelly opposed.
Are there any other additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? If not, all in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to four, Subcommittee Reports, Department of Public Works, Counselor Shinier.
No report, and we have a meeting, I believe, on the twenty-fourth.
Moving on to B, Education Union Services, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting last Monday, April seventh. We have one item tonight, and then we have our budget meeting slated for April thirtieth. That's both the school budgets and all the other departments in the town that fall under VHS. Thank you.
Moving on to General Government, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have not had a meeting since the last Town Council session. There is a meeting scheduled for budget issues on May first.
Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting also on Monday, April seventh. Items eleven through nineteen on tonight's agenda were discussed.
Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. We have no meeting scheduled, one on the twenty-nine, review the budget and a couple of other items. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number five, Chairman's Announcements. It's been a while since we've had a council meeting. It seems like we're out of vacation. I'd just like to say that since the last meeting, Mr. Vallar has got a job in another town. It seems to me that there's going to be a new beginning in Southbridge. I know Counselor Montigny has worked a lot of different numbers, and we're working the school numbers to try and figure out what the school budget is, compare it to other districts, find out where the strengths are, where the weaknesses are. And in looking into that, I'm happy to say that Mr. Vallar is no longer here. It's been a long road. It's been dictatorial. I think the citizens are happy. They can all debate all they want about why he left, but the vote of no confidence, when you see the information on what's going on in our school system, you would have your vote of confidence would be down the tube. So going forward, we're going to try and turn the page in a positive manner, is identify the problems, work with the new acting receiver, Bill Metzger. He, I met with him. He's a fine gentleman, again, under the leadership of Mr. Vallar, he's limited on what to do, and now he's in charge. So I think the town manager, staff, school committee, council, it's time to move on to the next step and get our schools back. It would be, it would be nice if we could sit down, and I've already requested this, sit down with the state and try and calculate a date for the citizens of Southbridge, so we can know, we know where we are and where we're going, and how long it takes to get there. It's like building a house. If you know how long it takes to build it, then you set the completion date. And if it gets bumped a week or two, or a month, it's not bad, but usually it's on time and under budget, and I think the state needs to do that with us. I think our school committee and council are poised to work together. I don't think the school committee and council are ever the problem. I think going forward, it's a good thing that Mr. Vallar left. I'm one of the happiest guys in Southbridge, with the Southbridge First Agenda, move forward, and that's what it's about. Moving on to Town Manager announcements. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First is the, just updates on some of the curbside collection, solid waste. The curbside yard waste begins the week, next week, April twenty-first to the May thirty-first. That'll be our annual, that you put things on the curbside in paper bags. The yard waste dumpster, that normally is at the Gulfwood Road, DPW, will open after the conclusion of the curbside pickup of lawn and leaf, so that'll open the first week of June, and also will be open Saturdays from noon to four, as it was last year. We will be holding a household hazardous waste collection event on May third from nine AM to one PM at the DPW. Again, location, there are some fees that may apply, so we do have advertising out and about throughout town and on our website. Additionally, Maritza has worked, and the team and the inspections department has worked to secure a dumpster and the ability for people to dispose of mattresses and box springs. Casella normally charges a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the disposal of those materials. We're able to secure a contract to have a company come in and pick those up at a cost of sixty-five dollars. So trying to help along the way. That'll be one time pickup. It is tough to get rid of things, so we are offering that as a service. And then on May seventeenth will be a beautify Southbridge on a rain date on May eighteenth. Reminder that there are two public hearings to be held this week, April sixteenth, Wednesday evening. The first hearing will be conducted at five thirty PM here in the Town Council chambers, and that is to add a water regulation for water use restrictions. This is because of requirement of Mass DEP, and that needs to be in place by the end of this month. I did attend a court hearing on the appeal that was being held regarding Springfield Water and Others versus the Mass DEP. So it's the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission and Others versus the Mass DEP. That was a three-judge appeal. They heard arguments as to why we believe we should not be part of that requirement, as with those other systems. So we'll wait the appeal, so that hearing, public hearing will be in effect at five thirty PM. Later that evening at six thirty, there'll be a joint Town Council and Southbridge Planning Board hearing for proposed zone and bylaw changes relating to accessory dwelling units. Public input and comments are also, are always welcome and to attend at that time. Update on a couple of projects that we have, fire station bids. Our sub-bids have been received and reviewed. Our general contractor bids will be due Wednesday. We're hoping for some aggressive bidding. We have a lot more bidders out there than the last round, and our goal would be to have a recommendation for the award on the contract on May fifth. We're also working with West Street Schools and the airport in regards to some minor projects that they have, and those bids are all both due on April twenty-fourth. Finally, this evening, I've passed out the town budget in accordance with the Town of Southbridge Home Rule Charter. I'm pleased to present the fiscal FY twenty-six budget and capital plan for the Town of Southbridge. The budget was a result of countless hours of work and extensive collaboration between our finance team and town departments. At the time of the submission of this budget, we continue to have several unknown factors such as potential changes resulting from the collective bargain negotiation process for our police, fire, and dispatcher unions, as well as the final budget revenue and state charge numbers from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Despite these factors, we are submitting our recommendations for a balanced FY twenty-six budget that will allow our community to continue to provide excellence in local services while balancing the tax impact that this would have on our residents and businesses. Over the past year, we have been dedicated to recruiting, training, and retaining talent in individuals to serve in key positions in the town, and we remain dedicated to applying sound financial practices by seeking and leveraging grants and funding avenues outside of the tax levy. The goal for FY twenty-six was for the town to continue funding a budget that reflects the Town Council priorities, as well as the increasing needs of our community. The department heads were instructed to submit a level service budget to meet the current needs of our community. The proposed budget for FY twenty-six is set at seventy-eight point four-four million and is based on the town's existing financial policy directives and prudent fiscal management, which includes principle that one-time revenue should only be used for one-time expenditures and sustainable budget practices. The budget that we are proposing this evening maintains all town operations at the current service levels and relies on projections of available revenue within the limits of the town's financial resources. The budget is based upon an established ceiling of revenue derived from the property tax increases pursuant to Proposition Two and a Half. The budget proposal that you have is quite extensive. Look forward to working with the Town Council over the next few weeks in reviewing this budget. Again, this is a level service budget. There are no new positions in this budget. The biggest factors that we are up against this year, and is articulated in the budget memo, is the fact that our health insurance costs have increased over a million dollars for the Town of Southbridge. We worked very hard to make sure that all our health insurance costs are captured. We did an audit on all town employees that receive health insurance, both town and school. As a result of the collaborative approach that we have now with the new administration at the school, we worked to, their initial recommendation for a budget for the school system was over thirty-nine million dollars. Based on the work of Dean, Michelle, and our team, we reviewed all avenues of funding that the school has and captured any available costs that the Town of Southbridge has and inputted it into the Schedule Nineteen costs to ensure that the town meets its minimum school obligations and that the school district itself was utilizing the exact correct numbers for that process. Working with Bill and his team, we're able to reduce the original recommendation from the school budget by approximately one million plus from their original request. In tonight's budget package, I included the original budget that the school district had put forward in their hearing notice, as well as their revised budget that they worked on, based on the number that was agreed upon to make sure that we meet our minimum net school spending. We still have a lot of work to do. Again, this budget is at the maximum tax levy capacity. That is exactly what we did last year when we proposed the budget, and throughout the budget process, we were able to pull back approximately half a million dollars from that tax levy capacity when we set the tax rate. So once we receive the final revenue numbers for FY twenty-five, we'll be able to then look through the budget, and also hopefully at that time we'll have our contracts with our bargaining units settled, where we can make adjustments to pull back any money from that tax levy. So I look forward to working with all the counselors and citizen members on the Subcommittee as we work forward on this budget process in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Moving on to Presentations, we do not have any presentations tonight. Moving on to Citizens Forum, are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda? There are no citizens coming forward. Moving on to nine, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Chris Hart as a sanitation slash health inspector, as recommended by the Director of Inspections Services, effective immediately pending successful completion of medical screening and state ethics.
No moves.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Shinier, seconded by Counselor Ortiz. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this was recommended unanimously at Subcommittee. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to recommend the appointment of Christopher Hart as the Sanitarian Health Inspector. Christopher comes to us with a bachelor's of science degree in criminal justice, history as a dispatcher in the public safety field. While he does not have extensive food service experience, given the fact of his experience as a dispatcher in public safety and being able to articulate reports and his people's skills, it was wonderful to meet him and recommend him for appointment. This appointment process went through with the Director of Inspections and the Health Director, who interviewed Christopher to begin with. The recommendation was then brought to me. I brought in to the meeting the Chairman of the Board of Health and the Vice Chairman of the Board of Health to have a second interview, because they do work closely. He was found to be a well-rounded young man, and it was without hesitation that we, both groups, had recommended his appointment. His appointment did go down to the Board of Health, contingent on this evening's vote for him to act as the agent of the Board of Health, so we're happy to have your support to have Christopher stop with the Town of Southbridge.
Any discussion? Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I see Chris in town around all the time. He's very polite, very respectable, very nice the way he talks to people. He born and raised in Southbridge. I think he will fit the job and keep the good attitude. You're a good guy. Take care.
Any other discussion? Council?
I just have a quick question. I definitely don't doubt that you'll be able to do the job. Just about the certifications question about, do we do some of that training in-house, or is it like a state certification that he'll need to, and how quickly?
He'll be onboarded with Daniel for training here in the community, as well as any outside training we would send him to, so I believe he will succeed, be a long time employee for the town.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Would you like to speak a speech? Why do you want this?
(laughing). Very excited to work for the Town of Southbridge, and I've seen so many changes through the council, through the departments to bring glory back to the town, and I'm looking forward to be part of that team.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Congratulations. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Ten, vote to confirm the appointment of John D. Jovian Junior as a municipal hearing officer and Madeline Monadeas as the secondary municipal hearing officer, effective immediately until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
No moves.
Second.
Motion second.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of this is Evelyn, who serves as the municipal hearing officer, will be out and is intended on retiring and not returning to the town's employee. So she will be out right now on a medical and then retiring. Based on that, we had to seek having a municipal hearing officer. There are courses that are set up throughout the town, not through the town, through the Department of Fire Services for certification as a municipal hearing officer. After reviewing the different departments, there are certain regulations that take place as to who can be a hearing officer. Because the inspections department issues tickets, they cannot act as a hearing officer, anybody in that department. Because Michelle does collection of twenty B's, that department cannot do it. So in looking, I even asked Ms. Dean if she would do it, but because technically she has some oversight of conservation, which issues tickets, her department can't do it. So at that time, it was decided that Maddie would take it, and I would take the course as well. We both signed up for the course. We both jointly conducted ourselves for the hearing. My original goal was to have Maddie as the hearing officer, and I would just serve as secondary, but a little quirk in the Department of Fire Sciences says, if you're not logged in under the email that's set up, they will not give you credit. So we had the fire chief try to get us a waiver through that, and the Department of Fire Sciences would not budge. So therefore, they said that they would allow Maddie to be a secondary hearing officer, but I'd have to be the hearing officer, so we're just recommending this. If another course comes up, then we would have Maddie just attend that course and change it, but this is for us to be able to hear any municipal hearings going forward.
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you, Chair, through you. As you and pass chief of police, are you going to be able to make the fair judgment for the residents of Southbridge, or are you going to use it as a, because you used to be a chief or police, the way the judgment is going to be done to the residents of Southbridge?
Thank you, through you. If anybody knew me as a police officer, I try to be very fair to everybody that I dealt with. I continue with fairness. My belief is that you act with all the facts in place, and you make the decision on the facts. So if the facts, if a police officer was wrong, even when I was a police officer and we went to court, if I felt that the case should be dismissed, we would dismiss it. So I always act in fear and impartiality, and as long as everybody does their job correctly. And you do have to have some compassion. I think that conversation has been held with the, even in the Board of Health meetings and our inspectors. And I think Counselor Lozo, when we had conversations of some individuals that would not do what they were supposed to when we issued tickets, our goal was not to issue tickets, but to have you comply with compassion and empathy. So if we have to use the ticket process to make somebody comply, we will, but that's not the goal. My goal, even as a police officer, was not to write tickets, it was just to slow people down and have them be safe, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to eleven, vote, vote an extension of the CDBG FY two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, Commercial Rehab Contract Agreement with Pablo Santiago to renovate forty-four Hamilton Street, with the project completion date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinier. Discussion. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was approved to move forward by a five-zero vote.
Any further discussion?
Question, Chair. Thank you, Chair, through you. Forty-four, is that that building across?
The old press box.
Frenchies.
Frenchies, the press box. It's right on the corner when you go into the municipal.
Across from the Crown Chicken, correct?
Across the street.
Okay, and so he never moved forward yet?
No, he didn't get it done.
Okay, I mean, I didn't support it last time, and I'm not going to do it either this time. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, one descending vote. Counselor Dow. Moving on to twelve, vote to enter into an agreement for twenty thousand dollars with VHB for twenty-five percent design services of Hamilton, Central, and Foster from the tip limits and work to Main Street to preparation for a Mass Works application using Chapter Ninety funds that allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was approved to move forward by a five-zero vote.
Unanimous at Subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to thirteen, vote to apply for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, mini entitlement FY twenty-five funds for the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for housing rehab, commercial rehab, and code enforcement, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow. Discussion. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is approved four to one to move forward.
Any further discussion? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was the one who voted against this, only because I'm not opposed to the CDBG grant. I just think that there's better use for this money. I mean, we have a lot of streets and sidewalks in this town that could use some work, and the residents would like their streets and sidewalks fixed. I'm not denying that we are fixing a lot of streets in town, but there are other streets throughout the neighborhoods that could use some attention as well. Also, we have some building needs. I'm looking across the room here, and I could see that wall over there with some pretty bad stains on it, so this town hall could use some work, could be used for fixing up the handicap access. It could be used for a lot of things, for policing, for infrastructure, school building needs, and I just think it would be a better use of those funds. When I look at what it's being used on, and I look at the proposed budget that we have here, almost fifty percent of this is going towards salaries, then the rest of it's going for a housing rehabilitation program, which according to the paperwork would only cover five houses, and commercial rehabilitation, which would only cover four properties, and that just seems like a misuse of funds. So that's why I think that I'm still going to vote against it, just think that there's a better use for the funds, funding. Thank you.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, one descending. Counselor Marquetti. Moving on to fourteen, vote to accept fifty thousand dollar grant from the mass development of Globe Village Brownfields Assessment and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was moved forward five-zero.
Unanimous at Subcommittee. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to fifteen, vote to enter into an agreement with Fuse and O'Neill for forty-nine thousand dollars for the Brownfields Phase Two site assessment at Thirty Mill Street, contingent on executing the mass development grant agreed, agreement, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow. Discussion. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was moved forward unanimously in Subcommittee.
Unanimous at Subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to sixteen, vote to the extension of CP Houses Upper Agreement, allowing for an additional eight months to complete work by December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The vote in Subcommittee for this Agenda Item was four to one.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Shinier, then Counselor Marquetti.
Just for clarification on the vote, what's the CP House?
That's the name of the property. It's the old Southbridge Credit Union.
Okay, so they call it the CP House?
That's the name of the business that has the agreement.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I am the one who voted against this item as well. The reason I voted against it at the meeting was, I was pretty much looking at what this money is being used for, or not being used for, especially the guy next door at Thirty-nine Elm Street, and it's just a kind of looking at it and thinking that this isn't really a good program to continue with. The guy next door is not doing any work whatsoever, and the guy at two oh five Main Street didn't look like he was doing anything either, so I was starting to wonder whether they are actually using the funds for what they were supposed to be used for, or if they were just using the money for something else. And I had a lot of questions about it. I know that Ms. Dean said that if they don't do what they said they're going to do, and they don't pay it back, we can take them to court, but that's just going to cost us more money. So basically what it comes down to, in my own opinion, is just a lack of oversight. However, having said all this, at the meeting, the guy who owns CP House, Mr. Cummins, said that any- that anytime anybody wants to come over and take a look, they're welcome to come over. So I took him up on that offer. And I did go over there. And I was really impressed with what they're doing. He has totally gutted it. I talked to his construction manager. He gave me a little tour of the place. He showed me what's going on, the lack of insulation. They're completely down to bare walls. The heating system was is they had to tear it out. They're going to put apartments upstairs with mini splits. So they're working on that. They're going to put they're going to bring gas into the downstairs. They're gonna put a little Italian deli down there. And I was quite impressed. I was impressed with him explaining detailed what they're going to do. And I and with all the work that was going on there. So I've changed my mind, and I'm gonna vote for it tonight. I wish that guy the best of, the best of luck with his project. It looks pretty good to me. So thank you.
Thank you.
If I may just make one quick comment, just in my own self-defense, when I hear there's a lack of oversight on the program, I just want it to be known by everyone. This program was designed using ARPA's legal language from the feds. We designed it in a way that we were able to recapture funds in the future, which was unique for us. We'll be able to use this as a revolving loan fund. But the only way we could do it was to not have explicit oversight over the program, because that would trigger prevailing wages, which would then require the builder to have to pay that much more. We didn't want to disincentivize people being able to get this work done to open storefronts.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present? Moving on to 17. Vote to enter into a new host community agreement between the town of Southbridge and Cannibro LLC DBA Green Path. Allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Motion.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. The subcommittee voted 5-0 to move this forward with a positive recommendation.
In unanimous at subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present? Moving on to 18. Vote to enter into a new host community agreement between the town of Southbridge and Green Meadow Farm LLC. Allow the town manager to sign any related documents.
Motion.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor.
Thank you. The subcommittee voted 5-0 to move this forward.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present? Moving on to 19. Vote to enter into a new host community agreement between the town of Southbridge and 208 Worcester Street LLC. Allow the town manager to sign any related documents.
Motion.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Dow. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The subcommittee voted 5-0 to move this positively forward.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present? Moving on to Counsel's Forum. Counselor Montetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing tonight. Thanks.
Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I'd like to echo words that the town manager said earlier about the hazardous waste day. It is on May 3, 2025. That's a Saturday. What's important, and the town manager alluded to, is that the public suggestions have been heard. Textile shoes and more are now being collected. Mattresses and box springs are now being collected. The fee is $65. It's not cheap, but the state mandates aren't helping the cause, and you can be sure that the items are disposed of properly. The problem with mattresses and box springs is that they have to be torn apart, and the various components need to be separated out. They don't just burn a mattress or toss it in a landfill. So they separate out the metal, they separate out the wood, they separate out the cottons, the foam in some instances, and that's all gonna be reclaimed and sorted out. So that increases the cost of recycling a mattress or a box spring to begin with. So I encourage people to dispose of their mattresses and box springs properly. Don't leave them on the side of the road, because that just means that animals are gonna get into them, and there's the possibility of the animals being hurt. And it's unsightly. It's leading to blight. Do the right thing. Bring your used mattresses and box springs to the DPW on Saturday, May 3. I'd like to congratulate Vern Rivera in the Town Clerk's Office for her last day of work last week. She's done a great job for us, and I wish her well. Last Wednesday, I, along with Counselors Dow and Ortiz, Senator Fatman, and former State Representative Karen, were deeply honored to be present at Arlington National Cemetery for the burial of Sergeant Edward Kowaleski, an engineer on a B-24 Liberator bomber during World War II. He was killed in action just three weeks before the end of hostilities. Unfortunately, his remains could not be recovered and identified until recently. He was buried with full military honors. Earlier the same day, we were also present for a laying of the wreath ceremony at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, performed by the Southbridge Veterans Council. Led by David Adams and assisted by Tracy Price and Jason Kelly, the three laid a wonderful wreath commemorating the ultimate sacrifice sons of Southbridge and the USA have made. It was an emotionally draining day, but the least we could do, given the ultimate sacrifice Sergeant Kowaleski and other sons of Southbridge have given to protect us back home. Special thanks to David Adams and the Southbridge Veterans Council for extending an invitation to us to attend and play a small role in such an important event. Of course, our deepest condolences go to the family of Sergeant Kowaleski. We hope this brings closure and peace to them. That's all I have.
Counselor Dow.
Nothing.
Counselor Shinja.
Nothing.
Counsel Ortiz.
Nothing.
Counselor Rivas.
Thank you through you. I was fortunate to attend the WCAC Legislative Breakfast at the Head Start location here in Southbridge. They had legislators from all the areas, the Lester site, as well as legislative aides from Rep. Marcy and Senator Fatman and Rep. LeBeuf. Head Start parents shared their, their stories of how important Head Start is to our community and to our working parents, and asking our representatives and senators to make sure that there is funding in the budget. Certainly, there are concerns with the cuts in the national budget to early childhood education, and Head Start is a vital program for many of our youngest residents here in town. We also talked about housing and advocated for a couple of different bills in the House, in particular, H-2328 and H-3056. And one of them would enable cities and towns to pass rent stabilization ordinances to fight displacement. H-3056 would create a local option for real estate transfer fees to fund affordable housing. And these are just two of the bills in the House that would certainly help a community like ours address some of the housing concerns that, that many of our residents talk about. I also wanted to remind folks about the Southern Worcester County CAC Resource Fair. The next one will be May 8 at the Tri-Community YMCA from 11 to 1:30. There are many resources for people in our community. And we are fortunate that the YMCA is hosting these resource fairs that will be done every other month. I also wanted to let people know, we had our first open mic night at the Taggeria Siguatnaba on Central Street. It will be the second Friday of every month, starting at 8:30. Poetry, storytelling, comedy, and if you have, you know, if you're a good singer, please join us at the open mic at the Taggeria. That was their first event there, and it went great. And one final thing, I have actually a couple of questions. Since we were voting on the dispensaries, and we've kind of been seeing people wanting to get an update of how much we've, we've taken in from the dispensaries, I think that residents would like to know, sort of thinking about what was the estimated amount that we had thought about at the beginning and sort of where we are now, you know, and hopefully maybe at our next meeting, we can get an update of, of what that looks like. Just, just because I've seen a lot of residents talking about that in relation to the roads and them trying to understand about the, the funding. And I had another question, but I, all right, that's it for me. Thanks.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. Just noticed on, on Facebook over the last couple of weeks, there's been some, some concern about a letter that went out from the inspections department concerning blighted properties, et cetera. I want to say, first of all, that I believe the vast, vast majority of property owners in, in our town take excellent care of their property. And I believe, after speaking with town manager, that the intent of the letter was just really to be informative, to remind people that there are bylaws in place that will to protect the town, and that people are, are, have a duty to maintain a certain, maintain their premises. So I, I don't think the letter was intended to say anything beyond that. And I certainly hope if people do have concerns, that they contact the town, the town manager's office particularly, to, to address those concerns rather than engaging in a, you know, basically a Facebook diatribe about, about the letters. I can see where some people would be concerned about the letters, but I'm sure that those letters were really just intended to inform people about what the, about the code and the general duty that property owners have to keep their premises in good repair. And as I said, I think the vast, vast majority of property owners in our community are well within compliance. And, but if you do have concerns, please address it to the town. Thank you.
Counselor Montetti.
Thank you very much, much, Mr. Chairman. So I'd just like to echo the chairman's words earlier. I think we're moving into a really good opportunity here for the school system with Dr. Villar leaving. And it is all very well timed here. It's budget season. So I was able to get the public records request from Bill Metzger, who's gonna be the interim, starting on April 30, which is the same day we have our EHS budget meeting. He was the director of, he was the chief HR and talent development officer. He's now the interim superintendent receiver at April 30. I'm going to send the 98-page document that I've scanned. I gotta figure out the best way to send it to you, counselors, but I feel like it's only proper that you all receive it too, as I'm a counselor requesting it. I just, you know, encourage that if you were to ever post any of it, please blackout people's names. There's really no necessary reason to do that. Stick to the salaries and the positions and leave the personalities out of it, if you don't mind. So I just wanted to let everybody know a couple highlights from this. The top five highest paid people in the district, which do not include Dr. Villar's salary, because his salary you can't find in Southbridge, you have to request that at the state level. You have the Director of Secondary Education, which is something that they don't have in other districts, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Special Assistant to the Superintendent, Chief of Staff, which is the Secretary of the Superintendent, and then, of course, Mr. Metzger. Those five positions total $760,000 in salaries. They're all over $150,000 a year in salaries, including the Secretary, which is named the Chief of Staff, to the Superintendent, who has two assistants. As you read there, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, that's pretty much all you need for curriculum in a regular district. If you, if you do your research, because most of the districts in our area follow the rules, you're supposed to have your line item budget posted on the internet, and you can go to Webster, which in Southbridge, we have 28% students are white and 40% are white in Webster. I think it's the, the perfect demographic of a rural suburban place with an urban population. And when you're trying to compare budgets, it's almost the exact same amount of students at the high school, okay? 17 to 19 administrators roughly when it comes to districts in the area, and we have closer to 35. If you look at the Webster-Bartlett budget for the high school, the entire Department of Assistant Principals and Principals and Dean of Students, and then the entire budget of guidance counselors, and all of the supplies and everything they have for their same-sized high school, is $850,000. But salaries alone at our Southbridge High School is over a million, and that doesn't even include supplies. So I'm just going to rattle off here the last of some of these. These are pretty much wasteful positions. In most districts, you don't have any of these positions. Special Assistant to the Superintendent, like I said, $150,000. Elementary Curriculum Specialist, $140,000. Already have Assistant Superintendent to Curriculum. Director of Elementary Leadership, I don't know what that is, $138,000. That's one of those positions where they took a really good principal, moved him to central office, and made a job for him. Director of Math Curriculum, don't usually have this, $137,000. Director of Operations, most districts have facilities managers only, $133,000. Associate Principal, I, you don't hear a lot of co-principals out there, $113,000. Principal on Special Assignment, that's another principal that's moved up to the central office and does something for $119,000 a year. Senior Supervisor of Elementary Education, $120,000. Science Coordinator, $117,000. Two sped supervisors for $113,000 each. Educator Developmental Specialist, $109,000. Instructional Coach, $100,000. I'm trying to tell you, these positions don't exist in almost every other district. Director of Data and Accountability, $92,000. Assistant Business Manager, $95,000. So that office for the business manager and the assistant alone is making $250,000. All those add up to $1.8 million. And that doesn't include the, the first five that I spoke about, or it doesn't even include the Special Education Director for $150,000 as well as in there. But you need one of those, of course. So, you know, when you add up all of the employees that are making more than $85,000, except for the guidance departments, you have a whopping $5.6 million. And that's without even including Dr. Villar. So if you could just imagine the amount of waste that is in some of these things. I mean, we're not mispaying necessarily our principals, but we have way too many. We have seven principals for five buildings. We have seven assistant principals and five dean of students. There's just way so, way too much. And then the 1.8 million of the list I just read to you, can you imagine? With $2 million even, extra million dollars, $2 million. We have so many students, special education and bilingual services in this town, you could be providing these children with the resources that they need to succeed. And you can't tell me that all of this admin at the top are the resources that they need to succeed. And I can tell you why. With my last statistic, 2024, 10th grade, okay, Southbridge High School, 17% of the MCAS English tests met expectations. 1% of students exceeded expectations. That means 82% of the sophomore class last year did not even meet the expectations of English in Massachusetts. Math, 10% met expectations, 0% exceeded it. That's 90% of the students in the, in sophomore class do not meet the expectations of Massachusetts. And science is 7%. That's 93% do not meet the expectations. So you're telling me, anybody who wants to question the last seven years, or even the last nine under receivership, I think we're left with the worst results that I've ever seen for our student education deliverance. And it's time that the state pays attention to this multi-million dollars worth of wastes that are going to adults to not deliver education to our children. You could be hiring two teachers for every single classroom with the waste in this budget. So I'll be making it available to waste in this budget. So I'll be making it available to you guys as soon as I can. It's a large, it's almost a fifty megabyte, uh, PDF file. So, um, I promised I'd share it with you, and I'm very much looking forward to April thirtieth's budget meeting, where we'll be hearing the school budget, uh, and the new revised one that the manager said, where they found the extra money. So thank you for that, Mr. Manager, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for those comments.
Again, the Villar era has ended. This is a Villar design. I'm used to, since I've been chairman, to get involved in issues and cleaning things up, whether it's DPW, the school department, or whatever we work on. It's a good time right now with Bill Metzger, Metzger, I'm sorry. He, I sat down with the gentleman. He understands the budget. He works hand in hand with our front office and our townside team. That is a big change from the way it was. Um, our school system was in a shell, and we weren't allowed to know a lot of what was going on. Well, now it's a new era, and I think that, um, the state will be sitting down with them and the new commissioner, uh, and we'll work together. But I gotta tell you, there's no way that this budget can survive, uh, under this management and still accomplish the mission. So I mean, thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chairman, for all the information. I'm sure you did your homework on it, and I think going forward, we need to spin it in a way where we point out the problems, cure them, finance them properly, and let's get the kids back, kids for striving for excellence, something that's been lacking. Okay, moving on to discussion of next meeting date. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting date is Monday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM in the council chambers.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion by Shinja, seconded by, uh, Mr. Montagu. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.